And zoning commission to order. Would you please call the real Nico?
Yes, Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Matt Lawson.
Present.
Greg Sherry. Ismael Harris. Pablo Serna.
I have heard from both of them and they are delayed a little bit, but they will be coming.
Okay, Scott Long. And Carrie and Cheryl will not be joining us tonight.
Okay. First of all, we want to welcome our new member, Scott Long, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And tell us a little bit about yourself. Is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Been living in Central Texas since the mid 90s. Mostly in Hayes County. Moved to Bastrop in 2018. I work for Texas Parks and Wildlife, the Financial Resources Department.
Well, thank you for agreeing to serve and welcome to one of the hardest working wards in the city, if I may say so myself. It's never dull. Do we have any citizen comment requests?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then we will move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the September 30 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes?
Also, please note the minutes were amended. The vote was mistyped on the Farm Street Village, and so it has been corrected to correctly reflect the vote of 4 to 2.
Does anyone have any other additions, corrections? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Please let the record show that Mr. Harris has arrived and joined us on the dais. Item 3B, consider action to elect commission officers for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The only officers we have are Chair and Vice Chair. I've been privileged to serve as your Chair for quite a while. And Pablo Serna, who should be here shortly, is the Vice Chair. If anyone else would like to run or would like to be considered, or if anyone has nominations, we'll consider those now. Does anyone want to nominate the current?
I make a motion that we keep officers as presently constituted.
I second the motion.
Motion is second, is that kosher? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you for your vote of confidence. And we'll tell Pablo that we all quit and he's the Chair when he gets here. Okay, item 3C, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1C Section 6 preliminary plat being 24.391 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number five, located south of Sam Houston Drive within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit 8. Ms. Allison.
Good evening Commissioners. So these are the last, the two preliminary plots coming up, 1C 6 and 1C 7 are the last two that connect Sam Houston to the original section of the colony. So this 1C 6 extends along the south side of Sam Houston. As you can see, we are working our way back towards the old colony. It is 24, a little over 24 acres, 91 residential lots, three open space drainage lots, 40 to 50 foot wide lot widths. We have four local streets and an extension of Sam Houston. And a stormwater detention goes towards the west. All right, and here's the picture of that plot. As you can see, we extend Sam Houston Drive towards the west. And then we have the neighborhood pod there. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you ma'am. Are there any questions? If not, I will consider a motion. Staff recommends approval. I'll consider any motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect, it passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item 3D, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1C Section 7 preliminary plat being 55.846 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number five, located south of Sam Houston Drive within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit 8. Ms. Anne.
All right, so this is the last section that connects Sam Houston to the existing Sam Houston Drive towards the west. As you can see, we actually have some developed lots on the west side there. We are in that very elbow of the development. This one is 55, a little over 55 acres, 98 residential lots, three open space drainage lots. One of those drainage lots is a very large regional detention pond, so you will see multiple sections draining into this section in the future. We have 45 to 65 foot wide lots. Sam Houston Drive connects, this is the last piece that actually connects it all the way to 969, and the stormwater drains to that regional detention pond. All right, so here is the first portion of it. You can see that Sam Houston Drive to the north with the neighborhood pod, it connects to 1C 6 to the east. And then you have the cul-de-sac that heads towards the west. And then the large open space there is the regional detention pond. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you ma'am. Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that we pass?
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please let the record reflect, it passed unanimously. Item 3E, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1F Section 1 final plat being 11.984 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number five, located south of Eight Oaks Drive within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit 8. You're on again, Ms. Jennifer.
All right.
Allison, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this plot is a final plot and Eight Oaks Drive is the northern arm of the colony. And so we are actually extending into the upper arm on the northern side. So this is actually outside the statutory ETJ and the voluntary ETJ area, which is still the city's subdivision jurisdiction. Future land use here is neighborhood residential, it meets that. We have 35 residential lots, three non-residential lots, with most of the lot widths there were 55 feet. We have two local streaks and extend Eight Oaks Drive, which is that main arterial. All right, so this lot, or this plot extends that road to the south, which connects to sections further down in that elbow of where it starts to come back to the east, and then has a stubout to the section to the east as well. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you ma'am. Staff recommends approval, are there any questions? Any concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion, motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect, it passed unanimously. Thank you ma'am. Item 3F, it's a public hearing, and consider action to recommend approval amendments to ordinance number 2015-14, Pecan Park Commercial Plan Development for 66.494 acres of land out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract number 98, located south of State Highway 71, east of Orchard Park, west of Hassler Boulevard located within the city of Bastrop, as shown in Exhibit 8, establishing a repealing clause providing severability and providing an effective date and forward to the December 14 City Council meeting.
All right.
You're on again.
Yes, so this is the Pecan Park Commercial Section, and it is, here's an outline of the boundaries. We have Sterling Drive that goes into the residential section, Agnes Street that goes towards Walmart and Hassler Street, and then connects up to 71 on Orchard Parkway. So the original, or the Pecan Park Commercial Plan Development was created in 2015, and it's a little over 66 acres, commercial development, mix of office, multifamily, general retail, commercial uses. There are two developed lots, south side and ally ER. And so they are proposing two amendments to their plan development district. The first one is to increase the height allowance in the general retail land use district from two stories to four stories. So this plan development district has, I think it's five different districts in it, right? And general retail is one of those districts that's allowed within. And so just for that particular district, two to four story, this district allows retail, neighborhood, and regional shopping, hotels, and restaurants. And just for reference, the B3 code outside of the downtown, old town area, so you know, across the river in this general vicinity, does allow five story max, and they're just requesting four. Request two is for the multifamily district, and they are requesting an increase in the maximum multifamily unit count from 400 to 408. They have a multifamily development coming in, and that balances their building layout. So that's, that's the specificity in, in that request. And so multifamily in the commercial plan development allows up to 25 units per acre density of apartment buildings.
Low rises to find is how many stories?
Ooh, I should have looked that up. I think it's, yeah, two.
Two.
All right. And staff recommends approval of both of those changes.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, are there any questions of staff? If not, I will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak?
No.
Anyone who signed up to speak? Is there anyone who is here who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? If not, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
What's planned to go in, in here? I mean, we're...
For the...
Hotel?
Yes, yeah, so the story increase was to allow for modern hotels, most of which are four stories. And then for the apartments, they wanted to maximize their, their density allowance and balance out the building layouts and the building types. And so with how they design their buildings and the number of units and how those buildings are set up, basically another eight units let them have consistent buildings throughout the development, instead of having one randomly small one or having to reduce everything by one. You don't see apartment buildings with even, or odd numbers of units very often, so it just lets them keep their, their traditional building design.
Right. And does it, does it seem like we have enough roads to handle a traffic coming out of apartments and hotels and maybe restaurants? I mean, I'm, I'm not seeing too much there, and I'm over there. So I'm like, this, this seems like we're putting a lot there with only one or two small roads.
Right, so there is an approved preliminary plat in this section that calls for extensions of some of the roadways through there. And with the Agnes Street connection that's proposed, that, you'll see that be amended here in a little while in upcoming meetings, but you know, we are working on those connections and making sure that those grid connections are there as appropriate.
So this connection to Orchard Parkway is, I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, so Agnes Street, let me see if I can remember how to operate this.
I know the Agnes to Sterling.
Yeah, so Agnes Street goes up towards the other Agnes Street here, and then you'll see Orchard, which is up by south side, will come down and intersect Agnes Street. And then it's not on the map, but there's another thoroughfare planned road on, that lines up with Hunter's Point Drive that comes across and intersects Sterling as well. And then of course, in commercial developments, we always require cross connectivity
Right.
Between all, all commercial developments.
Okay.
That answer your questions?
Oh, yes.
Okay. We are, Cynthia?
The hotels that are over there currently, the Hampton Inn, Holiday Inn, how many stories are those?
The Hampton, I believe is four, the Comfort Suites is three or four, three?
Three.
Three?
Three, yeah. They're in the ballpark of four, three or four.
Commissioner Serna is now present.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
It's all right. I did have...
We all quit and you're, you're president and we're going to all leave it.
I did have a question on the height. Is there a Florida error ratio in our code right now that if we have higher than there's greater land use, or do we have anything like that?
We do not, no. No. And so any four story building would need to meet the International Building Code requirements, as well as the plan development has, you know, its own subdivision requirements for setbacks and that sort of thing. And so it would meet all of those.
Any other questions?
My only question is on procedure. Are these going to be two separate items that we vote on, or are we taking them in, because there's two different requests?
You can consider them together or separate.
We can do it either way, we can take them together. One is just adding four, eight apartments. The other one? Eight more units?
Oh, eight units.
Yeah. And the other one is the one that's more substantial, so we can do it either way if you want to do it. My preference would be to take them together, since they were submitted together and staff considered them together. If that's okay with everybody? Commissioner Serna, any more questions on this one?
No, I was, I'm sorry, I was late for the first part of this, I guess. So the density, as far as, my only issue with the greater height is, so on, can you go over this part that I might have missed on the request for the additional height? Is the intent that it's 408 units, right?
So those are in two different sections.
It's two different.
So the commercial, yeah, the commercial plan development has five different districts within it. One of which is the general retail district, and that's the only district requesting the increased height.
Right.
And that's specifically because that's the district for, that allows hotels, and most modern hotels are four stories now. The multifamily district, which, once again, separate district, different height requirements, is just requesting to go from 400 to 408 units.
Okay, I got that now.
You're up to speed now. That's all right. Stuff happens. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve as is.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? One, one opposed. Thank you, sir. Motion is approved. Item 3G, public hearing and consider action to recommend approval of amending Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Section 2.3.004, annual adoption of schedule of uniform submittal dates for site plans and place type zoning changes in Bastrop Building Block B3 Technical Manual, Section 1.2.002, uniform submittal dates as shown in Exhibit 8, establishing a repealing clause providing severability and providing an effective date and forward to the December 14, 2021 City Council meeting. Ms. Lane.
All right, so these are our annual submittal schedules, and these were created in response to House Bill 3167 of the 2019 Texas Legislature, which has subsequently been codified into Local Government Code, Chapter 212, that requires 30-day approvals of plats, site plans, et cetera. And so we created these schedules to create a predictable upfront information with a timeline, and that ensures that staff can appropriately manage those submittals. So generally speaking, Monday is submittal day. If it is accepted for review and we have all of the required items to complete that review, we will issue comments the following Thursday, which is more or less a two-week review. These schedules build in required notification timelines for any of the cases that do require notifications, and we did adjust for city holidays. All right, so we have, I think it's four different schedules. One for plats that are approved administratively, and so you can see our once-a-month submittal dates there, when we conduct those checks to make sure that we have all the items needed to review, and our 30-day timer, turnaround for a final administrative decision date within 30 days. The next schedule is for plats that come to you all for approval, since we have to build in meeting dates into that 30-day timeline, so it is also a once-a-month submittal. Same, same situation, you know, you submit, we verify everything's there, turn around comments, they have an opportunity to resubmit, and then we bring it to you all with the appropriate notifications as needed. We also have a schedule for zoning concept schemes and neighborhood regulating plans. Zoning concept schemes, we built a schedule for just because they do have such specific notification requirements, and they go to you guys as well as City Council, and that way you can see a timeline of how long that process takes. And so that is, once again, a Monday submittal, but a different Monday than the plats. Then we have site plans and public improvement plans, which are on a different week. Same situation though, Monday submittal, go through review, and 30 days, within 30 days, you have a final administrative decision date. All right, I guess that's, any questions on this?
Allison, I just have a question back on the plat with the 30-day requirement which we're in, but just a question, once that we have our meeting and we approve, generally, is there a timeline, once this is done, from us to the end of the process, of how long it takes to get everything in place where they can get the ball rolling?
So we will not bring it to you until it is administratively complete, and then once you guys approve it, that is your, that is the approval. The only thing that's done after that is making sure that we get the Mylar copy and have money to go record it at the clerk's office and get signatures.
How long does that usually take, that process?
To get it recorded?
Right, just once we approve and that minor thing of administrative and, and recorded with the...
Less, less than a week.
Okay.
Sometimes we do that next day.
Great, I just needed, just...
Well, sometimes things are submitted but not accepted. Because there are things that are missing, and of course, it can take longer depending upon the rapidity with which an applicant gets everything to staff that's required, so...
And I read all that in, in the, the regulations and the codes. I just, my question was just if everything's cleared and there's no problems, and so obvious, it sounds pretty, pretty quickly, so that's great.
Yeah, I mean, if you turn in everything that's required and you have your plat, you know, detailed with all the correct notes on it, and it meets all the, you know, code regulations, I mean, you can submit it that Monday, we'll verify you have everything for review on Tuesday, and you get comments that either say you're great, or you get comments on the deficiencies on why it's not completed.
Good question. Any other questions? If not, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Is there anyone in the room that has not signed up but wishes to speak? If not, I will close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion from the commission.
Make a motion that we accept the city's proposed submittal dates.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect that, it passed unanimously. Thank you ma'am. We'll go, move on into item four, workshop update on upcoming projects, Bastrop Building Block B3 Code updates, and comprehensive plan amendments.
Good evening, so...
But before you start, I was waiting for Commissioner Serna to get here, to officially welcome you back.
Thank you.
And to congratulate you on being named, not the interim, but the Planning Director for the city of Bastrop.
Thank you.
It's well deserved and well earned, and we applaud you.
Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you.
I knew her back when she wasn't anywhere.
Yes. So tonight, I was just going to go over some of our upcoming projects that we're going to be working on, and kind of impress upon the P&amp;Z that I know we're entering the holiday season with December and January, but we do have a number of fairly large projects coming up. We've definitely picked up in our, in our development cases that are coming in, and definitely, and we're in that kind of first phase of setting up, you know, all the entitlements on a property, then to start, you know, into the plating and all the actual site development. So just for, this is our list of things we have in review, in process right now for coming to the P&amp;Z in December or January. Some of these, we're still working out the details, but there's a good chance a lot of these will come at the December meeting. So you'll see Colorado Bend, which was formerly the Bastrop 552 movie studio. We had the future land use amendments and transportation plan amendments that got postponed that we were going to do once they actually filed for annexation and came back in with their zoning concept scheme. They've turned in their zoning concept scheme, so that'll be coming back before the Planning and Zoning Commission for all three of those items in the next two months.
Have they, have they filed for, for annexation?
Yes, and then we have the annexation. So the annexation itself does not come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it'll line up and go to the same council meeting. So obviously, we have to annex a property before we can zone it.
Before we can, or regulate it, yeah.
Yeah, so, but we can, but we can have the, the, get the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to take that forward with the annexation to City Council. So we're, we're going to have some of these processes that all line up to get to one So that's the first, the first case. Then we have Burleson Crossing East, and so that'll be another kind of section expansion of Burleson Crossing. That'll be coming with a zoning concept scheme, so just impressing upon everyone that maybe set aside some time to read the packet over the next couple of months. We'll also have the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park. They have the lower half of the park that hasn't really been laid out where the roads and everything are going to go, so they're doing a zoning concept scheme for that. And there's also a portion of it that's still Zone P2, which is rural zoning, and to bring that into the actual employment center district that the rest of the park is under. We have the Pecan Park Commercial Preliminary Plat, so with some of the new development that they have going on there for the PD that you just recommended to approve, they're going to make some adjustments on the lots and the street alignments through that to better reflect the development in that area. We have West Bastrop Village is amending, and they're also going by the name Adleton, so we're kind of between names. They're going to amend their development agreement to actually kind of reflect our code a little bit more, to have some of that more form-based and flexibility that you see in this, our B3 codes. That was previously approved in 2014. That was previously approved in two thousand and six, so it mirrored our, our previous codes. But that'll be coming back. And then also Lakeside Medical Neighborhood Regulating Plan. That's for the existing development to kind of discuss their overall layout. So those are a lot of big projects that we'll be all, that we'll be talking about for the next two months. B three code amendments, so while we're reviewing all these projects that are coming in, we also have the B three code amendments that we've been working on. We talked to you a while back about the wireless transmission facilities, which those are primarily cell phone towers. We're working still on the language for that and getting that through legal. We've also are working with some consultants to draft up some more specific standards for extraterritorial subdivision standards. That's one of the things that we wanted to provide some more flexibility in the code for the block perimeters. Right now, in the statutory ETJ especially, we pre-gridded out the seven-twenty block structure. In some areas, that doesn't work, where the county roads are at different angles, or there's some interesting topography. So we're trying to add in some more flexibility and creativity in those rural areas, but still adhering to the connectivity requirements and block, larger block structure in the ETJ. We're also working to kind of update the code format. So right now, we have the B three code, we have the technical manual, and then we have the development manual and the Authentic Bastrop Pattern Book. So we're gonna roll the technical manual. It was envisioned to be a little bit more visionary and then actual technical details, but that's proved a little confusing, so we're gonna roll the technical manual as part of the B three code proper, I think, to provide a little bit more, better flow once a developer's reading through it, to see all of our standards in one code. And then I've brought it to you several times, we have the remainder of the list, there's still several other things in our code, coming up with some alternative processes for review, so we, for smaller projects especially, that we can group some of those steps in the review process, to streamline the review. With House Bill thirty-one sixty-seven, they do have some allowances for an alternative process that you kind of work on different timelines under, but we never developed that process when we were adopting the B three code, because it had just passed months before we adopted the B three code. So we're gonna go back and look at that. So that's going on while we're doing development cases. And then we have other projects. So one of the other, the things we've been talking about for the last year is updating our future land use plan and doing the five-year update to the comprehensive plan as a whole. So we're going, we have, we did get approved for that in the budget, so we're going to deal with requests for proposals, and we're hopefully putting that out in December to get proposals back in January, to get a consultant onboard that can help us analyze especially the future land use and do public engagement to get that updated vision, and make sure we're, that our comprehensive plan, as it was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, is still on track, maybe update a few of the goals and objectives, but largely just kind of do a broad overview and make sure we're still on the right track overall. But the future land use itself, especially the plan, needs to better reflect our B three code. It's not misaligned with the B three code, it's just not specific enough to reflect the B three code when you're trying to, it's specifically called out zoning districts in the old future land use, so we need to realign those two documents. Annexations for Colorado Bend and Burleson Crossing East, a portion of the property that's being developed, or looking to be developed, is not in the city limits, it was actually in an, an area that was agreed to be annexed at some point in two thousand and eleven. So now that annexation for Burleson Crossing will be coming forward, so they can start their development. We have the floodplain map and the flood damage prevention updates. So I don't know if y'all went to some of the meetings that we had at the Convention Center. FEMA has updated our floodplain maps for the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County. Right now, we're in the appeal process, so if people have specific areas that they don't think the floodplain is right, they can provide data that will provide to FEMA, that they can appeal those decisions in the, on the maps. With that new data, we'll then be updating our flood damage prevention code, so in our Chapter Three of our municipal code, we have specific requirements if you're building in a floodplain. So we're gonna make sure that the, the nomenclature is properly reflected in that section, and make sure we're meeting all the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program with that. We've also, we had a presentation a couple of months back to city council for two new muds that would be created out in the voluntary, voluntary ETJ Area B. So it's the area that the county usually oversees the review of the subdivision plans. However, if you're going to create a new special district, that request has to come to the city, since it, the, regardless of territory, it's all still the City of Bastrop's ETJ. So we have the request, they've submitted it, so now we'll have to vet that, and there's some work to be done to make sure we follow all the processes implemented by state law. And then we've also had a request off of three oh four, of a development that actually wants to voluntarily opt into our ETJ, so they could follow our subdivision standards. So we have, so we have a request to expand our ETJ to cover that property, that we'll be bringing back to city council soon. So we've got a lot going on.
How are you going to accomplish all of this with current staff?
So we do, we have expanded our capabilities with a third-party consultant that's doing review for us on some of the Platts site plans, those things that they can follow, you know, they can follow our code, they make sure it checks all the boxes, and that is following our rules. And, but obviously, we're still reviewing those too, but it frees up our capacity to work on some of the bigger projects. So we've, we've done that. Of course, I'm back now, so that adds a little bit more bandwidth than the staff has had for the last two months. But I think we can, with current staff, and we are actually, we've just hired, in the last two weeks, we've had a new code enforcement officer join our staff, Rakita Rose, so you may be seeing her around town soon. So she'll be able to field complaints or concerns that citizens have on properties or dilapidated building concerns around town, so that frees up staff from having to handle those. We also have a new administrative assistant that starts Monday, that'll be able to take on a lot of the internal processes that usually someone has to devote part of their time to. So we do have some staff expansion that also will increase our capacity.
So when you're comparing and contrasting and melding and making all the codes talk to each other as in one B three code, you and Allison are going to be doing that, or are you gonna have some help doing that too?
We're, I think for that part, we're gonna be doing that part, but for the, like, the ETJ standards, we've employed our third-party consultant to draft those up for us, so that they, they're doing a lot of the legwork, and then we'll be able to review and bring those back to the, we've given them the parameters of what we want the language to say, but they're doing the actual hard work of writing it up for us.
And I find it interesting that it was a healing cry when we had our moratorium and when we required reviews of our land use and the like, and I've noticed that a number of cities in the area, not the least of which is Austin and Dripping Springs, are, are doing the same thing that we did a couple of years ago. But when that happened, with this, this commission had spent fifteen, twenty hours doing subdivision updates, and all that went out the window. And then we had the moratorium that went on for quite a while. And then we decided that we're gonna be the B three codes. And we had rodeos, and we had meetings, and we had meetings, and we had rodeos, and then we went from this, all of these, use forms to the B three codes. And I hope that people that, of this city, understand the monumental work that this small staff has undertaken in accomplishment. Is it perfect? No. We need amendments from time to time? Yeah. But this group of people is, is a group of people that has done monumental work for the betterment of this city, not only now, but in the future. And things are different, and those are people that have been working on development here for a long time, are gonna see some differences, because you're not gonna get a permit as easily as you used to, humper, that's right.
Can't just walk in.
Can't just walk in and walk out of the permit anymore, but it's for the betterment of this community. And we haven't seen floods in a while. Part of that's because even, not just commercial, but some small residential development has caused flooding. We don't see that anymore, because it's subject to more review. And I want to compliment you and the entire staff on the job you've done.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Then we have updates.
We're ready on our updates. Update on five A, update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items.
So the only item that's gone forward from the Planning and Zoning Commission to city council recently is the Farm Street Village zoning concept scheme. So that went to, for a public hearing and first reading at the October twenty-sixth city council meeting. City council meeting held the, the public hearing and the first reading, and then will vote on the approval, approval or denial of that request at their next meeting, or at the next meeting that the applicant is ready for. The applicant actually requested to postpone until the December fourteenth meeting, so they could have a public meeting on November eleventh with the neighbors. They invited all the neighbors to come and discuss the project. My understanding, there's a few people showed up, wasn't probably as many people were in the room at the Planning and Zoning or the council meeting night, but the developer has been proactive, trying to reach out to see what about the project they could change that would benefit the neighbors, or, you know, that they see as an issue. So that should be coming back to the December fourteenth city council meeting for second reading. And one other correction that we have with our, a little bit of an eccentricity of our code. So in the B three code, and this was actually a carryover from our previous adopted code, there's a requirement that for an official recommendation to be made to city council from the Planning and Zoning Commission, you have to have five members vote in favor of the recommendation. So the vote at the last meeting was four to two, so P and Z made a recommendation, but legislatively in our code doesn't rise to the level of an official recommendation to council. That doesn't affect council's vote, so they still would need a simple majority to, to adopt that zoning. That, so basically, it just goes forward with effectively no official recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's also why I kind of impressed upon you that for these upcoming meetings, we, we need to have, you know, a quorum, more than a quorum probably, to make sure we can give adequate hearing to all of these cases, so.
We go to Item five B, update of individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners at particular items to be listed on future agendas without discussion. Do you have anything you would like to see in the future on our agendas?
I'm gonna bring something up, I was recommending, I was talking about Florida area ratio, and so the taller you make something, you can effectively either give them more development area, or some kind of trade-off. And I don't know if that's where, far away from us, I'm sure, having tall buildings in Bastrop, but I was, I was wondering if we had something already in there in our codes, it sounds like we don't.
We don't, no, on a Florida area ratio, no, we don't, so.
I know in some other municipalities, they'll, they'll trade off height for more green land. And that's a way to space the buildings.
Yeah, we, I don't see it as probably a pressing issue in our code yet, because especially like with apartment complexes, just monetarily, budget-wise, you're not gonna see an apartment complex that gets over three stories usually. You have certain building codes that kick in when you get taller than that. Similarly, you know, hotels are probably one of the few buildings that are gonna want to use that four to five story allowance in our code currently. But definitely, we'll keep an eye on that as, and that may be a future amendment we need to make, when we reach probably a certain kind of density, but we're still not seeing that, that high level of density.
I was thinking on a smaller lot, that may come into play.
Yeah, it may come into play on a smaller lot.
So I don't know, I'll put that out there.
Okay, but we can, we can definitely keep that in mind when we're looking at our code amendments, so.
Anyone else have anything for Jennifer? If not, we'll move on to five C, Building Department and Planning Department Monthly Projects Volume Report.
So we gave you both September and October, since we didn't have a September meeting. So you can see, we've held pretty steady on our new single-family residential construction. We had twenty-four new permits in the month of September and twenty-eight in the month of October, so that's still far higher than we were two years ago, but it leveled off from our, you know, hundred and fifty we got in May, or March. But still a steady, a steady new construction coming in. And planning, actually, we picked up a little bit on our applications in the month of October, as you can probably see by some of the new projects coming forward, so.
I have a question.
And then we did have the quarterly report that was presented before council at the last city council meeting, too, and those are all available online. And they have a lot of workload and measures, not just for Planning Department, for the city as a whole, of just all, all the different things that are going on across the city, so.
So I have kind of a general question, so this is how many are coming in, and is there ever a way to determine, or I guess it's kind of complicated, but how many are going out, to kind of, kind of give us an idea of, are we...
And we, and we can get, so how many permits are issued in that month? We could, we could pull that number, yeah.
How many have come in, how many gone out, or something like that?
Yeah, so we can do that for that. Some of these take a little longer, so they don't, some of them pull over a month, so the numbers get a little, you had three come in and like twelve go out in one month, just because of the time lag, especially on planning projects. I will say, while I was relaxing at home, I was working on our population model, kind of estimating based off of new permits that have come in, and from the, so we were about ninety-eight hundred people in the city limits on April first. That was what the census numbers came out as. With all the new permits we've issued in the last year, we've added about a thousand people in the city limits, just in a year, or eighteen months. So we're issuing on average fifteen, fifteen new residential construction permits a month. So when, when you looked back in previous years, even before the pandemic, we were only doing about a hundred, sixty to a hundred a year, so. So that's, that's where we're at.
Those signs are slowing down.
Yeah, and that's why, when we did the B three codes, that was, it was either the growth was gonna manage us, or we were gonna manage the growth, so.
Right.
That's what we're attempting to do, so.
Yeah, next month, is there any way we can get a little more information on the Pecan Park Commercial Plan Development? We talked about it some this evening, and I said, my main concern was, whatever we put there, there's not enough roadway to handle, you know, the way it is, and I don't know how they're gonna connect Agnes, if they're gonna be putting, you know, that apartments and hotels and, and stuff in there, so.
Yeah, well, the, so the preliminary plat will come back before you, so it'll come in your packet. You'll see, see all the new, the roads, you'll see out, see the layout. We do have an existing preliminary plat that has those, it, it calls for Agnes, so when we actually have received a grant to connect Agnes, from where it terminates now over to where it connects back in with the hospital, so that road will be going in over the next several years with grant funds. And then there's several other roads that'll extend as the developer develops through. And then we've planned ahead also that, you know, if, if and when the track to the south of that develops, there's more connectivity that will be required coming from that development as well. So we're definitely looking at all of that and keeping that in mind, as all of this is now getting on the ground, so.
They put a lot out in there, and they're not doing much, just outside of that.
Yes.
All right, one more request, and it just kind of occurred to me, because you brought it up, but what's come up in some of these other meetings, people have brought up traffic imp- but what's come up in some of these other meetings, people have brought up traffic impact analysis. Is there a way we can just kind of get a little primer on that?
Sure, we can put that as a.
And what, how that works?
What it is, and yeah, how, what, where our code requires them, yeah.
When it requires it and things like that.
Yeah, we can just put that on the agenda for next time, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Item six, make a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Y'all have a great Thanksgiving.